Two thousand and twenty to order if everyone would rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which it states, one nation under God.
And invisible.
For all. Our meetings are recorded by Zoom. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda for the current meeting should have had something to Town Hall by the previous Wednesday by three o'clock. Just for official notice, all five council members are present. Approval of minutes from the July first two thousand and twenty Town Council meeting. They have been emailed out to everybody. So here a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Paul's Grove, second by Councilman Smith to approve the minutes from the July first two thousand and twenty Town Council meeting. All those in favor, so you can find by raising your hand. Those opposed, so carry. Mayor's report, bring that up here. There we are. All right. A lot of communications throughout the month with town staff, state officials, federal officials. I'm keeping close watch on the latest stimulus package coming out of Washington. I contacted Congressman Raskin's office again today, and they hope that something is approved next week. That package would help states, counties, and municipalities, to my understanding. I've given those figures out before. I think that is the sticking point of municipalities and state governments getting funding through this bill. I think the president feels this is a bailout. So hopefully next week we'll know a little bit more about that. But original figures were around four hundred thousand dollars for this coming year. So I'll keep everybody posted on that. There was a tree that fell down on Heinz Street, contacted Dave Klein, the time getison. His crew took care of that. Contacted community or contacted State Senator Reedy and the entire delegation. And Senator Reedy got back to me on the twenty second to talk about trying to find funding for State Highway Administration's portion of the Streetscape project. So he's going to be talking to the folks at State Highway Administration, Greg Slater, the. Yeah, Secretary of Transportation, and also Secretary Brinkley to see why not they can't come up with another approximately three point five million for the project to do it right. We had a couple go to webinars. One was reopening, enhancing cybersecurity and updating employee policies, especially when they're working from home. Hopefully going forward, that may be helpful if employees have to work from home again. But right now it's not a needed issue or not an issue. And then Town Manager and I both went on go to webinar on Smart Growth Sub Cabinet Public Forum last week. It was informational, but not, not the greatest news that we wanted to hear. I mean, it wasn't anything that we hadn't been hearing, I guess. Been contacting, continuing communications with local businesses. And right now I'm working on an RFP for the Dealman Inn Foundation Stabilization Project. Due to the complexity of the project itself, it's kind of hard to really put something down on paper to exactly what we need. So we're working on, on that right now. And I also talked to Councilman Huffman. He called me on the twenty ninth to discuss the permits for musical on the main, what we were doing. And I pretty much already made up my mind probably prior to last week. But musical on the main is not going to happen this year. I hate to say that, but I think everybody knew that was going to be the outcome. If things do get better, and perhaps by September first, September fifteenth. I would see why not we can't put something together, maybe down on Carnival grounds, maybe drive through meals by the fire department in the two churches. And music for maybe three or four hours, something to kind of just bring a little bit of happiness back to the town. Where everybody will be able to get out and gather, but we'll have to wait and see on that. So that's my report. But unfortunately, the worst news is musical on the main. But it's bad news for us, but it's not anything near some of the bad news that some of our businesses and other businesses are dealing with. So for us to not have musical on the main, we'll survive. So but hang in there, maybe we'll do still have something on October third. So just kind of pencil that date open. So that's my report. Any comments or questions? Community enhancement, Councilman Green.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents that are joining us tonight. So got a couple of quick things. As we know, last Friday at five P M, the governor went ahead and updated a mandate as far as wearing masks. And I know it's a issue or a hot button issue in certain forums with people that you talk to about mask or no masks or however that goes. But we did see a uptick, and especially in hospitalization rates over the last few weeks. And it's important to remind everybody that. It's a small part, but we should do our parts when especially when we can't achieve six feet apart. So we got to be mindful of that, even at outdoor spaces now. If you are not able to achieve six feet apart, then you should be wearing masks in that proximity. Next would be the statistical numbers. The governor posted through their contract tracing teams that family gatherings and backyard barbecues were the one and two reasons why COVID nineteen had seen an uptick in the last few weeks. So let's be mindful that when we're having events or family gatherings that we try to limit that as much as possible as far as how many people you have. And in good news, I did read or report today that we are under five percent for the first time since April. So that is in good news. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
My good evening, everyone. First want to thank Public Works Director Wayne Myers for providing me some notes that I'll pass on to you tonight. So on top of their regular mowing, the Public Works crew started pressure washing some of the town owned buildings and structures, and as well as keeping the gutters clean on several of our buildings. They did some grading work at the Atlee Ridge walking trail, as well as some fence repairs and maintenance at the Lions Club ball field. Again, they've been filling some various potholes around town. If any of the residents know potholes that haven't been addressed, please contact Town Hall, and we'll make sure that the Public Works crew takes care of those. As far as our equipment goes, they did install the new deck on the one John Deere mower. They had some service done on our Chevy, our two thousand and thirteen Chevy and the oh eight Dodge truck. And they're still waiting on some quotes for the new truck. So I know they'll be excited to get that, but we're waiting on quotes. Lastly, the planning commission did not meet in the month of July. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Paul's Grove.
Good evening, everyone. Some of this is going to be a rehash. I did meet with Director of Public Works Wayne Myers last Friday, and we discussed a variety of issues. But the hot item still continues to be the pump stations and unacceptable materials in pump stations. And we're not talking just Atlee Ridge now. We're also having problems at Blue Ridge and also the Code Drive pump stations. It seems as though some of the information that we've attempted to share has not produced the results that we had hoped. So we're looking at some other avenues, possibly some basket strainers in the wet wells at some of the pump stations. And also particularly at the Blue Ridge Pump Station, which Wayne is going to be getting some quotes on the rebuilding, the refurbishing of that pump station, where we might be able to put some additional either grinder pumps or some other way to deal with this. Because this is probably a problem that's not going to go away. I think we can continue to try to inform the public that flushable, so called flushable wipes are not acceptable in the sewer system, but they continue to be a problem. So we're going to have to find a different way of dealing with it. He also shared of several other issues that he's dealing with, and I have to commend Wayne for the job he's doing on trying to put out the hottest fires first. But we got several other things, namely the leak at the mainspring and the sledge tank at the wastewater treatment plant are two of the big items that need to be dealt with. So Wayne is on top of these things, but stay tuned because there probably will be some more talk about particularly pump stations and how we're going to deal with the continuing problems that we're having with those. There are several other things, but those are the hot things right now.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety, Councilman Smith.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have much. I will say that we are starting to see throughout the county, I guess, probably throughout the country. There's some phone scams going around that are causing people some problems. A lot of times they target the senior population. So be very careful of that. There's no state agency or federal agency that's going to call you and ask you for anything, like a payment for anything or your social security number or your bank number. No banking institutions are going to do that. No, no public utilities is going to do that. So be very mindful of that. Don't provide any information at all over the phone to anybody regardless of who they say they are. They're using everything from there's warrants out for people's arrests and their utilities are going to be turned off or their social security number is going to be suspended, which is just crazy. That's no such thing. But there is an uptick of those things, and we usually see them around this time. And you, you usually see them a lot of times around when there's something big going on, in this case, census and, and the election. Just getting through taxes and then with the pandemic. So be very careful of that. Don't fall for these scams. Report them all to the state police or to the sheriff's department. I believe all of them get smuggled to the state police and they get, they sort of get investigated through them. They keep a database on them. So just be very careful about those things as we do see an uptick on those. And then I will defer the rest of the report to the town deputy. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
Good evening, everyone. Just don't have much either, just a reminder to continue to support all the small businesses, the restaurants, et cetera, in New Windsor. If you don't already do so, follow them on Facebook. I noticed that Uncle Matty's, for instance, is posting that he's doing specials, and that's something new. So just follow everybody on Facebook and get that info. Just also a reminder that the Carol Reload Grant, they had extended the deadline until the end of August, and that's for small businesses and not for profit organizations. This is just speculation on my part, but I'm guessing that they must not have given all the money away if they extended the deadline. So I think it's worth folks' time if they have a need to go ahead and apply. And also a reminder that the Sykesville Downtown group is offering a marketing seminar tomorrow online. I posted it on Facebook again, I'll, I'll post it again. It's, it's free and it's, I think it's via Zoom. And then just, this is nothing to do with New Windsor, but I just wanted to mention it because she's a colleague in a way. Nancy McCormick, who's been the economic development person for Sykesville, I mean for Tony Town for twenty three years, is, as she calls it, rewiring, which I like, retiring. So I just wish Nancy well in whatever her next endeavors. Maybe we can get her to give us a little help, huh, Mr. Mayor? That's all I have.
I'll, I'll keep that quiet for now. Let her, let her rewire first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo though that. Nancy has been a tremendous amount of knowledge for me over the last, I don't know, I guess, probably since I became mayor. A go to person when I needed a contact either on the state or the federal level for either historical or economics. So she's been, she's been a wealth of information to me. So she, she has done an excellent job up in Tony Town, and I have already thanked her and congratulated her. And we'll, we'll be talking to Nancy later. So thank you very much. Community Deputy, let me pull your report up here.
Good evening. The Carroll County Sheriff's Office between the dates of July first to July thirty first responded to sixty eight calls for service within the town. Out of those ten required reports, which were the following, on July third, approximately seven twenty eight P M deputies responded to the one hundred block of Church Street in reference to a suicidal subject that was fully intoxicated and armed with a firearm. Upon arrival deputies observed that the subject had already been disarmed and been, and being pinned down by witnesses on scene. Investigation revealed that the subject became highly intoxicated, removed a firearm from their backpack, and began waving the loaded firearm around before pointing the firearm at themselves. Subject was taken into custody and transported to the Carroll Hospital Center for additional treatment. Due to information learned, the subject was later charged for being possession of a firearm and being under the influence of alcohol. Case was closed by arrest. On July eighth, at approximately nine twenty three A M deputies responded to the twenty eight hundred, twenty eight hundred block of Union Square in reference to a malicious destruction of property. Investigation revealed that the items that were reported damage were not damaged by the suspected suspect, but from either faulty construction or weathering. Case was closed by, as a suspicious condition. On July eighteenth, at approximately four forty nine P M deputies responded to the one hundred block of Main Street in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that known parties got into a verbal argument that turned physical. Both parties fled the area, and the victim was later located, however, was uncooperative with deputies. Case was closed by lack of prosecution. On July second, at approximately two ten A M deputies responded to the twenty seven hundred block of Mill of Court in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that husband and wife got into a verbal altercation that later turned physical. Both parties were referred to the District Court Commissioner's Office to follow their charges. Case has been since closed by lack of prosecution. On July twenty first, at approximately nine fifty nine P M deputies responded to the one hundred block of Main Street in reference to a suspicious condition. Investigation revealed that the resident at the location was under the influence and became disorderly while on the scene. It was later discovered the subject had attempted to commit suicide the night prior and asked for help. The subject was taken into custody and transported to the Carroll Hospital Center for additional treatment. Case closed. On July twenty fourth, at approximately six P M deputies responded to the four hundred block of Main Street in reference to an out of control juvenile. Upon arrival, it was learned that the juvenile had threatened to harm others within the residence, as well as cause harm to themselves. The juvenile was taken into custody and transported to the Carroll Hospital Center for additional treatment. Case was closed. On July twenty fifth, at approximately eight forty four A M deputies responded to the eleven hundred block of Joe Apter Place in reference to a fraud investigation revealed that suspects had registered a vehicle on the victim's previous business. Case remains open. At approximately eight forty four A M deputies while on scene investigating the previous incident had, was advised about a late reported theft. Investigation revealed that no suspects were paid to complete home improvement work, which the suspects failed to complete. Case remains open. On July twenty sixth, at approximately two twenty P M deputies responded to the block of Main Street in reference to a suspicious condition. Investigation revealed that a subject claiming to be a recruiter for a modeling slash talent agency contacted two juveniles by phone. Parents and ju, both juveniles advised that they were unsure how the recruiter received their information as they did not contact the agency. Investigation continues on that one. Thirty, at approximately twelve thirteen P M deputies responded to the three hundred block of Lambert Avenue for a reported shooting. However, investigation revealed that a firm scam artist had called in the false report in order to get back with the homeowner who is not willing to provide any of their social security benefits with them. Case was closed by lack of evidence because the phone number was tracked back to, what did I think? The only other thing that I got to report is I've been seeing a uptick of parking in front of fire hydrants under Transportation Article twenty one, one oh three M. Drivers cannot stand or park vehicles within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant. If you are seen in violation, you could receive a citation for sixty dollars. And if the fire department catches you, they're fired. They said that they will cut your doors off of your vehicles. So just be wary. Report.
All right, thank you. Is anybody here for West Carroll Rec Counts? I don't believe so. And speaking of the fire company, we'll give the fire chief's report. This is from Chief Byron Welker. For the month, twenty two fire responses, fifty six EMS responses for the year, one hundred and fifty three fire responses, three hundred and twenty five EMS responses. You'd like to thank everyone who came out for the drive through crab cake sale. It was a huge success. For your support, we are able to maintain a fundraising stream to keep us going through these tough times. We know that everyone is finding it a little bit harder, and we appreciate those of you that are still able to help us out. We will continue to be there for you just as you are for us. And I had the honor and opportunity to help with that crab cake sale. And I tell you what, the fire department really has their act together. They sold about a thousand crab cakes within two hours. They had them going in, and there was really no backup until, well, before it even started. The parking lot at the Community Meeting Center all the way back to Route seventy five. So once we got started, we had two lines, and it was definitely a smooth operation. So Chief, if you want to relay that back to the fire department, they really know what they're doing. To continue his report, on a county note, Director Robert McCoy began July ninth as the Director of Fire and EMS Services for Carroll County. This is the first in county as each of the fourteen fire departments have operated as an association with no overall head. Mr. McCoy's job is to bring the career staff employed by the fourteen departments under one umbrella as the Carroll County Fire and EMS Department, and provide overall support and supervision to the fourteen fire departments. We welcome Mr. McCoy, who has an impressive resume, beginning in Prince George's County, where he started as a volunteer firefighter, before joining the career service and rising to the rank of Deputy Chief of Operations. He then became the Fire Chief of an established New York area United Fire and Rescue. We look forward to working with Chief McCoy. Thanks, Byron L. Walker, Walker Fire Chief, New Brunswick Fire House Company, number one. Thank you, Byron, for that. Town managers report.
Okay, good evening, everybody. A few things to report on. First one being the, it was mentioned earlier about the pump stations upgrade of Blue Ridge. This was first discussed at the July twentieth work session meeting. Just a recap on the information on the station. It's twenty seven years old. We've been having problems, failures, and breakdowns over the last several years, and these problems have increased recently. All the houses in Blue Ridge subdivision, the reserves and Snaider Summit, all flow through this station. This station, Blue Ridge Pump Station, has been in the enterprise capital project schedule for several years. And it's time, it's come to start the process to upgrade the station. Town Manager Dine, Public Works Director Myers met with G M B engineers on site July twenty eighth, and we discussed our needs, options, and plan, plan moving forward. We do plan to expand the site and fence by grading and utilizing some retaining walls to allow more room for service vehicles and also provide a diesel or gas generator on site. There's a very old style backup motor system that's very unusual for current, for current pump station. So we're going to go with a more traditional generator backup system there. As, as Councilman Paul's Grove mentioned, we're also in the design of that, look at some grinders on the influence to, to help take care of the, the issues with the unfriendlies in the system, let's call it that. Since we, we have looked and been looking for a set, a clean set of, of the plans, which goes back quite a while, like I said, twenty seven years. We found some paper copies, but they're been exposed to the elements and, and difficult to read. So one of the first, or next steps for, for G M B is to have a local survey firm prepare a topographical survey for preparation of the site plan. But we, that site's very tight. If we, when we were walking around out there, we, we can, with some grading and moving of the fence and some, some retain, small retaining walls, usually big, big block type can create some more room so that service vehicles and, and staff and M E S can get in and turn around and get off the road a lot safer in that situation. So that's, that's that report there for, for pump station upgrade. The two thousand and twenty census, I just received word actually late today to, the date to complete and respond to the two thousand and twenty census has been extended to September thirtieth. This is actually a month earlier than the original extension date of, of October thirty first. The U S Census plans to accomplish this by ramping up and speeding up data collection and hiring more employees. So they feel that they can still do it accurately and, and get the job done quicker. So that has been bumped up by a month or so. Other information we've received from the county, county rep, who I'll mention later, is that as of July thirtieth, Carroll County's response rate is seventy eight point four percent, which surpasses the two thousand and ten response rate for the county. So that's, that's very good, and we still have some time to even get that up higher. Carroll County remains the highest response rate in the state of Maryland, and Maryland has risen to thirteenth in the U S. So we were previously twenty seventh in the U S, I believe, with the last numbers. Carroll County is planning two ice cream giveaways titled Get the Scoop on the Census in Union Bridge and New Windsor, which remain the lowest count areas in the county. The events will be two nights, the week of August seventeenth, from six to eight thirty P M. From six to eight thirty P M and the county will keep us up to date and provide more details. Uh, Laura Russell is the uh Carroll County Census Coordinator. Um. Town manager put Laura in contact with Councilman Paul's Grove um about. Uh, use of the New Windsor Fire Department grounds for the New Windsor uh ice cream event. And I believe Councilman Paul's Grove received approval from the fire department um for the census event. And um he met with Laura today to go over some layout and logistic uh questions and issues there. Councilman Paul's Grove, has, has a date been set for that for, for the New Windsor event?
Yes, when I met with uh Laura Russell today, they indicated that they'll plan that for Tuesday evening, the eighteenth of August.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, following our announcements from the U S Census about their additional efforts. Um, the U S Census is sending, and I checked on this, emails to non-responsive households. Beginning the week of August third. I questioned that with Ms. Russell. I thought it was a misprint because I'm not sure how U S Census has. Everybody's email that's not responding, but that was the information she had. She's looking into it a little bit further. Um, enumerators, which are your door to door folks for the census, um, started, started going door to door last week. Uh, in some cases, they're just leaving, uh, uh, just dropping off census forms and bags. And they're hiring, like I said, hiring more staff to ramp up and speed up efforts to collect the data. To meet the uh, the new completion date of September thirtieth. So. Um, just an update on the census. So we still have some time and encourage everyone to, to participate and take it. It's very simple. Very, takes literally maybe five minutes of time. It's very simple process.
And Gary, we have, I just checked, we have jumped up to sixty two percent self-response. So that's. We're out of the fifty some percent. So we're at least moving a little bit, but still need to get uh better numbers.
Good, good. Uh, lagoon filling project. Um. Give me an update on that. It's going well. Uh, I'm sure the recent rain from the tropical storm slowed progress uh a little bit. But we did not get as much rain as was originally forecasted, so that was good. Um, there was a large sinkhole that opened up on July, uh, July twentieth. Uh, one of the large dump trucks, standballs trucks that was, that was hauling. Uh, the dirt from the rail cars to the lagoon was partially swallowed up by the sinkhole. Um, but fortunately, no one was hurt and no equipment was, was damaged. Um, Zach Neal is a hydrogeologist with Carroll County. He was on site monitoring and documenting the uh repairs. And Zach provided a report for, for the town record with um uh measurements, location. Uh, quantities of different, different uh sized stone that were used, methods of, of compaction and that kind of thing. Um, I did receive a call from Tom Devilbis. A lot of you all know Tom. He's the Director of Resource Management uh with Carroll County. Uh, his, his group is in charge of the uh, the stormwater projects, among other things. He contacted me about the, the town paying for the repair of the sinkhole. Um, he had mentioned that to me in the field. Um, the sinkhole is, is, was unplanned. It's, it's unpredictable and, and no one's fault, county, standballs or the town. So. Tom, Tom was gonna check with standballs on, on that. I had mentioned to him about, um. You know, possibly splitting the cost ver- you maybe labor versus materials. So he's gonna get back to me. Um, lastly, in my report, uh, just a brief mention that uh the fall bulk trash, at this time, the fall bulk trash. Uh, is still scheduled. Um, however, the date has been moved up one week to Saturday, October twenty fourth. And there'll be more information will be provided regarding any changes to procedures with the COVID nineteen pandemic. But. In talking with uh Director uh Wayne Myers, he feels that we can, we can do that and. With some minor rearranging of things and still, and still uh keep everyone safe and, and distant. So. We're just at this point moving it up uh a week to the twenty fourth, but more will come on that. Up for my report.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, Gary, was this sinkhole actually out in the lagoon area?
Yeah.
And was it an area that had already been filled and compacted or was it down at the bottom level?
No, it was, it, they had filled, uh, they had filled approximately, I wanna say. I'm guessing here, but probably five, five feet at least and, and been compacted. And they're following, they're following T one eighty compaction rates, which probably doesn't mean a lot to most folks, but. That's, that's for, for the, the highest compaction level you can require for, that's for, for super highways and. Skyscrapers. I mean, it's literally overkill for, for that type of project. But that was the spec and it had been compacted and. It was being done according to they have um. Uh, company that, that does the compaction for, for standballs.
Okay, that's it. I, I would assume that the sinkhole really was um underneath. The area that had been filled and compacted and obviously unforeseeable to anybody, I guess, right?
Yes, it was, it was, it was there. It was, it wasn't something that just, you know, popped up in over time. It had been. It had been laying there for, for who knows how long. It was gonna surface at some point in time. So. Honestly, better now than later when we have a contractor on site there to. Uh, take care of things. And like I said, fortunately, no one was hurt. Um, those big Tarek, Tarek's trucks loaded full of dirt. They weigh a lot and I'm sure. The guy was uh thanking his lucky stars he didn't go in any further.
Thank you.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
So as we talked about earlier, we have canceled our community based events going through October. But we approved a ice cream social event through the county to come into New Windsor. I'm just wondering, what is the procedures? Cause we heard that there are some formalities or procedures put in place, but. Is this a walk up event, drive through event? Is there gonna be sanitation stations? Is there gonna be, you know, face mask mandatory required in the area? Are we gonna get the logistics on that or?
I, I believe so. And, and talking with Laura, they are going to um. Cover all, all that, all the requirements and setup and, and, and um. The, the county's up on all the, all the C D C criteria. Um, I, I would, I would. I would venture to say yes, that all, all the, all the safety precautions are gonna be, gonna be covered.
Let, let me add that that was part of the reason for the site visit this morning was for them to see. The area that they proposed doing this and to be able to lay out all those precautions that would ness- be necessary. And so this would follow all the county, state and whatever guidelines need to be followed in order to make this happen.
Okay, and I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm completely all for having ice cream social. Um, I think. Us, not only is um Maryland residents, but probably nationwide, we're probably all about over the COVID nineteen pandemic. I think I'm more disappointed um in the fact that all our town social events are gonna be canceled for the future forward. And um, so it just, you know. Just wanted to make sure that everything was up to standard and that's all.
Well, we might need to be careful. Maybe we don't necessarily call this an ice cream social. Um, because obviously we're trying to be socially distant. But the, the idea is for them to get people to come out and to find out if they've taken, people have taken the census. If they have, fine. Uh, if not, they help them walk through that and actually take care of it right then and there. But then they're given a coupon to go to the, the Cal, Cal Ice Cream Truck, I guess it is, and get ice cream. But it's not necessarily designed to be a social event.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, some of the concern is some of the transmission of COVID nineteen is through paper or, you know, that's why they try to reduce money. So. I don't know how the transmission of the coupon goes and how that goes over. I, I'm just, you know, just wanna make sure they're following the procedures. I mean, as we just stated, we canceled all our events. And then here we approved a uh county sponsored event for census. So I just wanted to make it clear that uh. I'm for it, but as long as they're following the procedures, I don't have a problem with it.
Alrighty. Thank you. Treasurer's report now.
Good evening, everyone. So we've received our first uh local income tax revenue for July. A big whopping three hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty five cents. Now, just bringing that to your attention, that's about half of what we usually receive, sometimes receive a little more. So that's all is due, of course, to the fact that um. People have not been working and using the roads and gas and so forth. So hopefully we'll see that pick up a little bit. Uh, highway user revenue, we still have not gotten the final uh figure in for that for June, which. State typically, you know. They run a little behind. So hopefully by the end of August, we should see that and I'll have that information at the, the September meeting. And our real property tax, um, we've got the final payment in for that and that ended up being uh four hundred and eleven thousand. Seven hundred and forty three dollars and seventy one cents for the fiscal. Which, as you can see, is uh about twenty some thousand above what we had budgeted. The audit for fiscal year twenty is uh gonna be getting underway the week of September seventh. But once again, here's the COVID pandemic, uh, the work that they usually do, um, is usually on site. But we will be trying to do as much virtually as we, we can to, for the safety of everyone. So. Um, it'll be an interesting audit here.
Donna, not to interrupt you, but do you know whether or not the state is going to extend the deadline?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're, they're. I, I don't know what the deadline is, but I knew that there's um. Paperwork that the auditors, I'm sure, will be able to find that will tell them when they have to file, file. So.
Okay.
I, I can update you more on that at the work session.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Um, twelve properties for sale in the town, six of Witcher and Snaider Summit. And that brings us to the water sewer. So at the end of the first payment month for the new billing cycle, um. We had quite a few people who are over one quarter behind. So. Water sewer billing clerk, Lena mailed out some letters to those folks and their landlords if that applied to the situation. Um, just to try and touch base with them once again to find out, you know, we can work with them and what's going on. So it, it's a two way street, though. I just need, wanna remind people that we, we don't know your financial situation. So. It's up to you, you all to contact us and let us know so we can work something out. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Donna.
Sure.
Lehigh update, no one's here. Old business, social media policy. Um. Kim, Councilwoman Schultz uh sent out uh some um policies yesterday, I think it was, yes. And uh, everybody take a look at them and I would say we'll have that on the agenda for the uh work session.
Yep. Mayor, if I could just jump in, I, what would really be a good idea, folks, is if everybody could read them. Or just, I mean, a lot of them, if you skim through them, some of them, nothing in them is gonna have anything to do with us. But the ones that do have um. Portions that pertain to, to what we're doing, you know, just highlight them so that we're not, you know, gonna spend a lot of time on stuff that's not relevant. Michelle's not with us this evening. Is that correct, Mayor?
Oh, she's here.
Oh, okay. Michelle, did you get them?
Yes, I got them all. I've looked at, I haven't finished looking at them, but there's some interesting stuff in there.
Yeah, so just so that would, so that when we actually have the work session, we're, we're all prepared. To decide, you know, what we wanna talk about. That's all.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any other old business? New businesses, town road paving request for proposals. Get his report up here again.
Okay, so um. Circuit Rider Reynolds and Town Manager Dye have been working on our R F P for paving of three town roads. Um, the um. The roads in the R F P are Spore Line Drive and we've broken the, the roads into segments. There's three segments for Spore Line. Uh, Union Bridge Road, uh, three segments there and Mill Drive in its entirety. Um, based on the two thousand fifteen A M A C report, uh, discussion with Public Works Director Myers. And field inspections, we believe these roads are priority. Um, we're gonna be requesting prices for both uh full depth reclamation and or reconstruction. As these roads are beyond the basic two to three inch milling overlay. Uh, these roads are, are, are past the point of just milling the surface and repaving. It's just, we have to look at the bases and. Make sure that we get a good, a good re redo of these roads at, at this point. Um, I'm investigating the differences between full depth reclamation versus reconstruction. Um, um, I'm hoping that some of the smaller uh paving uh contractors who. We, we hope to attract, um, will be able to um have the ability to do both reclamation and full depth. Um, there's a, there's a pretty significant uh difference in the uh price per square foot. Um, so obviously we wanna do as much as we can with the money that we can, but. That being said, we also wanna do a good job and not, not just patch things at this point. Um. So I, I've, I've established a timeline to back us in. Um, to the end of the, the paving season for this calendar year. So somewhere around. Uh, on or around the Thanksgiving break. Um, I used that as a, a completion date and kinda worked our, worked my schedule back into that. So. I would like to, or plan to issue the R F P by on or before August twenty first. Um, we are, we're gonna do a mandatory pre-bid and walkthrough September ninth. Uh, had the proposals due uh September fourteenth and bid award at either the September twenty first. Work session or the October seventh council meeting. The notice to proceed will be the day after the award and will allow forty five days to complete uh the work. Which again puts us, puts us around the hot, the Thanksgiving break and. Um, the end of the, close to the end of the paving season. So um, we'll see how that goes. I do, a- a- as a side note to this, I've um. Was put in contact with uh one of the Sykesville uh Public Works uh gentleman. Uh, he's been very helpful. I had gotten uh information that Sykesville had put out an R F P. And when we were doing this, I contacted the gentleman and he was uh more than willing to share his, his version of the R F P and. Mike and I used that as a, as a basis and, and uh he was again very helpful. In fact, he's, he's coming to. Meet with me tomorrow and um walk, uh, walk the streets and uh, I wanna pick his brain and he's gonna give us some suggestions and. He's been uh very helpful. So I'm, I'm very thankful for that. So um, that's a, that's a good, a good thing there. So you want me to continue on the new?
Unless somebody had a question about it.
Hey, I'm sorry. Any, any questions on that?
All right. Continue on.
All right. Next on new businesses, reinvestment of uh enterprise CDs. Uh. New Windsor has two CDs with enterprise fund money that came due July thirty first this year. Uh, Clerk Treasurer Alvin researched other banks and options and CDs in general are not earning uh much interest these days. Uh, the town's CDs are currently with New Windsor State Bank and they are offering uh. The town an above market rate of zero point seven five percent for eight or twelve months, twelve months. Uh, so m- my, my recommendation along with uh Donna's is to reinvest the uh. Uh, CDs with New Windsor State Bank for either eight or twelve months. It's not a too long a period. And then at which time we can reevaluate and see what the market is doing at that time. So if anybody has any questions, either Donna or I could answer and we would like, I guess, need a vote to.
Right.
To do that.
There's no questions until I hear a motion to reinvest the CDs with. N W S B Bank for either eight or twelve months, at which time we can reevaluate and see what the market is doing at that time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Do we want to do eight, or do you have a preference to eight or 12 months? Or?
Can I ask if it makes a difference to Donna? I mean, Donna's the one that's going to be tracking it. Is it easier one way or the other? My gut feeling is to go with eight and see what happens. But if that presents a hardship or whatever, I'm going to go with 12.
It really doesn't matter to me. Either one is fine.
Eight months would just be easier to get the money if we needed it, that's all.
Right. I agree. I propose eight months.
That's fine with me.
You meant that to eight months?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Schultz, second by Councilman Green for reinvesting the CDs with NWSB Bank for eight months, at which time we can reevaluate and see what the market is doing at that time. Get back here. All those in favor, same time, raise your hand. All those opposed, all five hands are raised, so carry. Thank you. And Managed IT Services request for proposal.
Okay, this is more of an update and just an FYI. Town manager requested proposals from four vendors to provide the town with, excuse me, managed IT services. The town currently has an on-call contract with InfoPathways. Staff believes it would be a better option to have a regular managed service agreement to provide a consistent budget cost and hopefully better service. And town staff has had some issues with the current on-call contract with InfoPathways. Staff has met with all four vendors to hear proposals, discuss the town's needs, and allow for site inspections and see what systems we have and how we're set up. We met with the last vendor today. We also sent each vendor a list of questions from review of their proposals. And we got those back, oh, got those back. And we also requested that they provide three references, which we will develop a list of questions. Mike's already started on that, and ask those of each reference. And then upon final review of all the information, staff will make a decision as to which vendor to go with. So I don't think this is an item that needs approval. It's a, the range is run from, I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but let's say $250 a month to $650 a month. So there's quite a range there. But we're going to do an evaluation, look at everything thoroughly, and then make a group staff decision, and I'll report back to you where we end up with that. Any questions there?
Hey, Gary, I have a couple. Are we looking to do this as a month-to-month contract? Or are you talking about like a yearly contract?
It would be a year contract. We could, whoever we go with, if it's not working out, we can reevaluate and do it again in a year.
And are you looking at, are we looking at onsite tech support? Or is it remote access?
It's, yeah, mostly remote access. Yeah, all the vendors basically described the main advantage to the managed service is that it's more of a proactive approach to managing your IT. Do things behind the scenes. They typically install some types of software to be able to remotely monitor, do it automatically. They typically know before, or at the same time, we do, a lot of times before, the problems arise. And it's more of a, like I say, a proactive versus a reactive approach.
Sure, like, for instance, in my field, like Verizon, when a router goes down, I instantly get a notification as soon as a router goes down and lets me know that it's down, and what service ticket to follow and how to respond to it. I would recommend, if we're looking down that path, if they're having that monitoring system yourself, and whoever else needs to know should be on an alert and monitoring system. So if you know the network goes down, it's automatically generated ticket, and you're able to follow it. So you have a detailed report of what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question here? I believe it's been eight, 10, 12 months ago, we had a presentation by InfoPathways. And I believe this was to remove our server and get us onto the cloud. And I don't know that that ever happened, did it?
Yes, that has happened. Took a little longer than they thought and we thought. But that has happened, and we still have our server at this point. But eventually, we will do away with that and move everything entirely to the cloud. The one main thing that we have to work through is the utility billing software. It needs to be on the server for now, but we're looking at moving that to the cloud as well. But there's, again, some costs associated with that. But we wanted to get all our files there, and that, for the most part, all but, we found maybe one that hasn't come over yet. So we're keeping that active for now, but eventually, that server will go away altogether.
Okay, but would I be correct in assuming that this kind of thing, in other words, where our stuff is stored, or servers, cloud, all this kind of stuff would be managed by whatever contractor we would sign to do this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is InfoPathways one of the four that's bidding?
Yes.
Okay.
They've had our contract, I think, we met with them today, actually. And Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they've had the contract with the town since 2006. So they had the advantage of knowing us the best. And, you know, again, looking at the cost, I think off the top of my head, they're probably the cheapest right now. So I don't know, we have to look at everything. And like Terry alluded to, it's a monthly cost, but it would be a year contract. So it's not anything that we're committing to any long-range service plan or anything like that. So.
And Gary, one last thing on the subject. My suggestion would be, whatever company gives you the best SLAs far as uptime, that's who I would go to, because companies will tell you that they'll have it up in, you know, 99.9999. And the reality is, they're not going to get to it that fast. So whoever presents the best package with the best SLAs, that's where we really need to look at it at on that.
And help the layman, what does SLA stand for?
Standard, it's a standard licensing agreement. So how fast are they going to have your software back up and running if it crashes?
Great. I was hoping you were going to chime in on some of this.
Yeah, if you ever need any help with it, I mean, I deal with vendor management all day at work, especially when it comes to this type of stuff. Just, you know, send me an email. I'd be more than happy to jump in and look at some of this.
Great, great. Will do.
All right. Any other new business? Any residents' concerns? Seeing none. Any announcements? Don't forget the ice cream get-together.
Event.
Event.
Non-social.
Non-social.
Semi-social.
And that may give us, you know, a little indication of perhaps what we might be able to do if things break a little bit, maybe in October. So we'll maybe take notice of what they're doing and how they're doing it, and put it to use maybe somewhere down the road if things get a little better. All right, if nothing else, Ed, there's no fundraisers with the fire department coming up?
I am not aware that any dates have, well, there are some date sets, but I can't tell you. I think the auxiliary is planning some things, but I can't share. I don't know if Byron is still here or not.
No, he's gone. All right, we'll post those as they come about. All right, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
We'll take that as a second. We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Green, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, same time, raise your hand. So adjourned. 59 minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.